Have a meeting out. It's not today.
Commissioners meeting is.
Yesterday would have been better.
All right, well, good morning. Welcome to the February third meeting of Raleigh County Commissioners. Please join the pledge.
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, these public comment.
Okay, well, I don't really have a whole lot. Um, I kind of just took it easy at home this weekend. Rested and got myself straight again from last weekend's catastrophe. I didn't manage to get everything cleaned up and straightened up and put back together and I'm leaving it. I'm not messing with it from here on out, but. Um, Saturday morning, I did make it to the Lions Club's biscuits and gravy feed that I didn't know about until very last moment. It was over at the. College Heights United Methodist Church. A good turnout, and they know how to make some biscuits and gravy. Um, it was good, so um. Gave me a chance just to kind of get out and talk to some people and see some things that are pretty, pretty good raffle going on there too and to. Um, terrible good job putting that on, so um. Watch K-State men's. I, I, what, what, what?
Was it really that?
I mean, worst this team in December. I hope they keep it up too. Um, just for good cause. I was looking at their schedule this morning and I'm thinking. It's pretty manageable. I may have to play KU on Saturday and they still got Arizona at home too, but um, pretty manageable outside of that, so.
KU's not KU anymore.
Well, that's true. We have a tendency of knocking them off here every year, so let's see. Um.
Yeah, I think it's beat every year.
Scott Drew can come and talk to us anytime. If necessary, I have no issues with that whatsoever. So, and then turned around yesterday and watched the K-State women, probably KU and KU. Um, we're kind of iffy there for a second, but um, I put the pedal down and uh. Uh, one ninety-one to sixty-four, so I was able to catch that. There was no football. I don't know what you call that pro bowl thing. Um, it's more like X Games or something. It's. I don't even know why they bother with that, so. Of course, you got the big game coming up on Sunday, so I guess.
Oh, was your game coming up some?
Yeah, there's a, I think, I think I heard that somewhere.
What time is it?
I, five thirty-six.
Go say five, five thirty-six.
Yeah, they never start at six, you know, if I'm gonna get through pre-game activities, national anthem, all that, so. Probably six, seven, nine. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Well, I don't have a lot, full lot either. Um, Thursday afternoon, I did have a dental appointment, took out most of the afternoon. A couple more of those to come. Um, Friday came to the office and picked up some paperwork um, to go over this weekend. Um, I continue to kind of take it easy from my doctor's suggestion. It's really tough. Uh, I do have my back injection scheduled for tonight.
Those were no fun.
Yeah.
Had those.
Whatever it is I'm doing on Friday, it's gonna be better than that.
Yeah. Trust me, it is. I've had those.
Get me in here.
Friend of mine that's getting scared.
There's a small needle.
I don't even want to see them.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Can we just move on?
Well, let's see.
Yeah.
On Sunday, I reviewed paperwork and documents for today's meeting, spent some time outside, uh, enjoying the warmer weather, walked my dog along ways and.
I did some stuff out of my truck and got it cleaned up a little bit too. Didn't need to do that.
All the snow has melted. It's amazing.
Didn't use a ladder, right?
No. I got a little step thing on that. We were okay.
Okay, well, that's all I've got.
All right. Well, uh, way back last month. Uh, we went to the K-State women's basketball game. It was exciting game, an overtime victory over Iowa State. It was quite a game. Uh, Friday, then I had a meeting with Diane. I discussed a lot of things about the health department and also uh, just getting to know each other. And she has some good ideas about some outreach to the areas outside of Manhattan and also some ideas on arrangement of the two buildings. We get to that. Saturday morning, had a meeting of the North County Republicans. There was a number of things going on at the same time, so the attendance was low. We're at Randolph Middle School. There's a big group at something at the high school. There's a group at the community center. There's stuff going on all over there at the same time. Had Stacy Rogers, who's running for governor next year, was there. She has said no previous state experience, but is unhappy with the way things are going in Pika, and she said I could be better than that, so she's running. Yeah. Um, one thing I liked when she was talking about things was more power needs to go to the counties instead of the state telling how to do it. Went, okay. That sounds good to me. You know our background? In Wichita. Or maybe one of the small towns around.
It's a dangerous question.
I would guess fifty someplace plus minus. Um, hope you're right.
Yeah.
You always guess low.
You just really insulted a forty-five.
I'm sorry I asked the question.
And then uh, Saturday also watched the uh. K-State men's basketball with a sound beating of a number three ranked team.
That is hard to finish, okay.
Only, yeah, they just kept it on, started out a little slow like those do and then just took off. Then Sunday I watched um. Wrong here. Watched the women, the K-State women crush KU. I had disappointment in the game. They led up at the end. I wanted to see them drop a hundred.
Yeah. I thought KU was pretty good. Am I wrong on that?
They're, I don't know, they're kind of middle of the road. I mean, they're not set for it. They aren't.
Thought it only.
Sounds like they got a good recruiting class coming in next year.
Yeah, both of them. We do too. Both of us, yeah.
They're one of the sisters to one of our players for some reason.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's really good.
We both have McDonald's All-Americans going in.
And that's all ahead.
Ready for business commissions. First item I have, need a motion on highway use permit, proxy communication.
I can't tell where that is. The map is really. Where is?
Did look up to see where it was and now can't remember.
Well, the map doesn't, I can't read anything on.
Oh, it's up. Um, from Ogden up to that. That's Random Woods. Between Ogden and the airport, it's one. Somewhere by Ogden up to there.
Yeah.
Not sure.
Oh, okay.
Except this northern end of the um, development up there.
Yeah, I can see the development. I can't, I can't read anything.
Yeah.
I need to make the maps a little more legible, but.
Go ahead and make a motion into approve the highway use permit granting tox permission to complete the work as outlined in the permit.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the highway use permit, granting tox permission to complete work as outlined in the permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Next question, need a motion to approve Raleigh County CIP project funding activation for our works, uh, parks department. Amount of fourteen thousand for University Park, eleven thousand for Ogden, fourteen thousand, seven hundred to eleven, uh, Leonardville totaling thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, plus.
Okay, well, I'd move to approve the CIP project activate, activation listed um. Uh, or as presented, totaling thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars for parks.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the CIP uh, project activation for the parks totaling thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Next, commissioners, need a motion on the tax rule correction.
Well, I would like to make a motion to sign the tax rule correction as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the tax rule correction. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Thanks, Anna. Uh, next commissioners have Raleigh County uh. Position Action Forum Fiscal Analyst, Health Department, uh, Parks Department at a range eight. Do need a motion in that. Yeah, on this one.
Okay, it's open.
That's the one we talked about last week.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
John, I don't think you were here for that.
Oh, yeah.
You were here for that one?
Uh-huh.
Okay. That sounds like a tough one.
I was heavily impressed.
Anytime you see that, just on the left. Apology, yeah. She said, don't take it for granted. Do you see that? Just looking at her.
I know. I need to go take a nap. Oh, yes. I am a mapper. Yes, my dad was a mapper and I'm a mapper. Yes. Yes, yeah, I can do that too.
I don't like guys sleeping every good hour. Waste time, I admit. I wish I could just pop up like that. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm trying to keep me awake after supper. Then get it.
Yeah.
From there, then I have, but I was, I was, it made me stand up and move. But yeah, if I'm sleepy, I'm sleeping. And then I get a friend over there and I can't really sleep.
Derek calls asleep.
Everybody goes to sleep, but you know, wake up again. If, if I go to sleep like at night, then I wake up like at three or four o'clock in the morning and. That's it. It is. It's hard to function sometimes, Sunday. But.
It is.
Yes. Your sleep.
I find so fascinating, like even your sleep, Steve.
Yeah.
And wow, just.
I must be, I don't want to know.
Because I'm like, oh my gosh, how many of you are functioning?
Hey, no. How am I upright?
Yes.
Yeah, I know it. I know it. Probably trying. You're, you're, you're. There you go.
Hi, Miss.
This, have you talked to Janku about the procedure of the calling during the executive session? Okay.
Yes, it's a feature or something.
Oh, yeah, we, we can do that. We, well.
I think, oh, Courtney, maybe. I mean.
We had one at one time.
Yeah, that makes sense. Man, I know they make, they make up.
That's what we had.
System.
Yeah.
Put it in the middle here and you can hear a little bit better. Although we don't use it very often, probably, but. Then again, we're gonna be redoing all the.
Yeah.
Infrastructure here in the spring anyways, so. Maybe that gets. Taken care of. Didn't. Apologize for not, I, I wasn't feeling well this, um, oh, I'm.
I wasn't either. I wasn't for sure. I mean, Monday was kind of spur of the moment. I just. Yeah.
So I didn't get to precirculate um, what I'm gonna share, but it's literally. Eight sentences on this House bill of two thousand and five of a letter, great, or it's the one for the veterans. I was talking about it in my, um, you know, of, I'll apologize to the whole commission, but I'm, my, my, my like precursor to that. You'll love the letter because I reference a Lincoln. At the end of it. Right?
Well, it is February.
I know.
It was one on eighth.
I just, I had to throw that out there and find out how much you love. So do I. So I was looking, as you're probably aware, there. Oh, I guess it's been two years now, but this, be working out the rest of this year, but they are putting kind of a museum slash. Um. Well, um. Like history museum and slash starting down below and a Lincoln monument.
Yeah, that's gonna be so.
Well, I will tell you that because Saint Iver didn't want to. Was to play opening on the weekend library.
Oh, really?
It was, I, I was like, I cannot believe they let an army reserve. Do something that important, but we were a pretty good army.
Travis in Springfield?
Yeah.
Illinois.
Yeah, they brought us in and, and President Bush gave the keynote. And.
Junior, senior?
Junior, okay, during, in office. So I got to see the beast pulled up right behind.
Yeah.
And we got to play Hail to the Chief for him, and regardless of anything else.
Thank you, Jana.
Thank you, Jana. And I just threw out the letter that I'm grabbing off the draft up, but then, right? The, since it was in Illinois, the, the other keynote speaker was the just elected junior senator. Um, Obama, so we played Hail to the Chief for the city and the future.
What year was that?
Before.
Okay, yeah.
Didn't that wild?
We've been just making plans for that.
Yeah. I tell you what, you speak and I said, where did this guy come? Maybe you can turn it right.
I gotta start finding some hobbies. Learn football to watch on the weekends. That's something to do. Basketball is gonna last for another month or so too, so I'm gonna be out of options.
Yeah.
As in the baseball calendar, it starts at the end of the month, so maybe there's that.
Yes, I did have. I'm gonna have to figure that out, sure. I like breakfast places. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, Danison told me. Chamber thing. Oh, that new place you had to try it. We tried. I said, try it and it was packed.
Have to try it.
Might be one of those. We have to wait until summer to try it.
Yeah, exactly. Now, for sure. I really like a so long saloon burger, but one thing, the place is so small, but then when students are here, it's like, no way.
I had dinner at the night over wine dive and I just, I just had the fried oysters.
Right. Good, aren't they?
Gosh, those wontons with that sauce.
They're unreal.
I couldn't live off of those, I swear.
Uh, I agree. That is one of my favorites there. I'm like, we have a pretty stiff north wind today, even though the temperature's supposed to be pretty nice.
Tell you, you know, and then for that Lions Club thing, and it was really nice. I came back out and that breeze was like, whoa.
Saturday?
Yeah.
Saturday, the breeze having some chill to it, for sure.
Couple of us were actually gonna come down here and check out first couple rows of the farmer's market down here, because we figured it wouldn't be so packed and. No. Decided to.
That's not my wish, right? Had time to take time to go through. I like those farmers markets. I just never.
You get to, you know, like April, the van, they, they just get so packed on some Saturday mornings. This is the morning.
Have to go really early.
Yes, you do.
There. Hmm. Grab the ladder. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning, commissioners. Brian Parker, county counselor. Um, I uh wanted to apologize to all of you. I did not feel well part of this. Weekend, and so I had I had hoped to get out a little summary. Of House Bill two thousand and five before the before this session, but. Bless uh blessedly, uh House Bill two thousand and five is very short. And pretty easy. It was easy for me to confirm the most important points upon glancing through it. That this is for those. For those of us that aren't familiar with the bills by number, which would be all of us, including myself included. House Bill two thousand and five is the um current version of proper of uh tax relief. On property taxes for disabled veterans uh that's been proposed to the Kansas Legislature. Um, this concept has been uh floated pre in previous sessions. But has come with. Uh ramifications specifically for uh property tax. Uh, that would be received not just by counties, but by our other important vital taxing jurisdictions like the school district that would could have great consequences. Especially for communities like ours that are that are uh blessed to have so many veterans. Um, in our jurisdiction. Well, the legislature heard concerns and said, why don't we take some of our budget surplus? That we have and make it available for this purpose. And also, we probably should focus on relief for those that are most affected. Because we are, you know, resource limited. And so what they did in the most current version of the bill. Was to focus it on those that are permanently disabled. And or which have been found under a state, under a federal law to be unable to work. Um, and then they also said, we're going to fund it through an income tax rebate, so they get seventy five percent. A veteran would get seventy five percent. Only for their principal place of residence. Um, of the tech property tax that they paid in, they would be able to receive that as a credit. On their state income tax. So it is um to use the term of phrase that seems to have become popular, revenue neutral as it comes to um. Uh, property taxes. Did entirely by uh the state's uh tax dollars. Um, it doesn't come out of our. Um, um, our budgets, and so I worried because uh the. Of course, we find out about these things last minute. Um, I received a call from Representative Reiser. Uh, on Friday afternoon that this bill was going to committee um this afternoon and. It's not.
This one's not. The other one is.
House Bill twenty one twenty is?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was this one that was going to committee.
Yeah.
Well, House Bill twenty one twenty is. Um, House Bill twenty one, I like, I guess I worked ahead. House Bill twenty one twenty is very um uh. I would say uncontroversial um in in potentially.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, um, and that's not me trying to editorialize uh. All that I know about twenty one twenty is that it is the it has been a request by the. Um, by Kansas State University to sell the under complex, right? And that to do that, they have to have it as an inner as a. Um, they have to. There's an act of the legislature that's required before they can sell. Um, uh, where they can sell Kansas State University property. And so in response to that request, a bill has been introduced, House Bill tw- uh twenty one twenty that would authorize that sale. Right? And we've now been asked to um whether we have any issues with that sale. Um, of the property. And I could.
Yeah.
Right? And that's all I know. I don't.
To my knowledge, there's actually two pieces of property. It's that one. A piece of ground that the university owns in Nebraska. I don't know exactly where. Um, but they do have to invoke the legislature in order to sell. Cause it's basically state property. Yeah, I don't. That one's a little bit more tricky in the. Cause it hasn't actually been used for anything, so it's not you, but this one has.
Well, they rent that out. They lease that out to different businesses, don't they?
No, it's been sitting there.
Case they.
Yeah.
They had businesses.
No. Um, they may at least some office space at one time or something in there, but um right now it's off the tax roll. Um, it's about four plus million dollars is what Anna said, and there is a group. Of brothers out of California that want to come in, purchase the property. And turn that into workforce um housing.
Are they gonna want the R H I D?
They are not. To my knowledge, they are not gonna ask for any any type of incentive to do it.
Why do they wanna do that?
Uh, maybe because they got a plan that actually works without having to do that. Maybe they don't wanna go through all the red. Tape and the stuff it takes to go through that. Um, they've got a plan. They've done it. They've done it elsewhere in other states, so. Um, I don't know all the specifics on that. I I've just kind of heard that through hearsay, but. That was the kind of the plan to transfer, but it would come back onto the tax roll. Um, maybe they do ask for some type of incentive along the way. I don't know, but as. As it's been explained to me by two separate groups, that's that's not usually how they do it, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Hmm.
Um.
Who told that point in life?
Well, yeah. Um. I don't know, and I don't know what that does in terms of. Uh, traffic, traffic density on Anderson.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eventually, what my thought has been, eventually the city's going to have to tackle that one way or the other. Um, whether it's sooner or later, um, it's gonna be very difficult to do and. Um, just because you gotta get access to from all the other businesses and small property owners and residential owners along the way there, and it's. It's gonna be a hell of a challenge, but it's gonna have to be tackled at some point in time, so. Um, but usage of the building, usage of the property. Putting it back on the tax rule would have huge benefit at this point in time, yeah.
So is the university um. Having a plan of what they're gonna do with the money they get?
Well, see, that's what's probably gonna be debated.
Mm hmm.
Cause that does change. That does change some things. If they're gonna get a certain amount of money, maybe the state doesn't give them a certain amount of money.
Yeah.
Going to be probably discussed during today's hearing and uh further along, and that's probably the um. Um, that's probably the hang up at this point in time. That's a good question. Yeah, I I usually answer that.
The unfunded maintenance and all the building. Just gonna say, Cornell just made a comment. We drove by there and she said. They need to clean up the limestone, all the darkness on. I said, that can be done. And that's just what I was gonna say. Please give us some money to clean up the limestone. The existing buildings are old, but they look so much better cleaned.
Yeah. I I might.
Did with them. Fieldhouse. Build next to the one that they tore down. And they cleaned that up. It looks brand new.
It's just green space now. You did. They did on that west side. They did.
It's like we've done our bill. That's why ours looks so good.
But you have older facilities. It takes a lot of money to. Maintain such facilities, but then again, when you build new, you don't have to worry about the maintenance for a while, but. It's kind of a sort of a split, I guess, but this is one that doesn't really fit any one of their needs, in my particular opinion. I mean, it's way off campus. Um. I remember it as the old Farm Bureau building myself, but um.
Oh, yeah.
Well, there's a lot of space in there.
There is.
It could be a good housing thing if they could work that out, you know?
And it's supposed to be in that affordable range. That's the other part of it too. So it checks off a couple of. My opinion, very important boxes.
So like apartments, probably.
Yeah, yeah. But.
Not necessarily town, not necessarily like condos in the for sale, but probably.
I I don't. I haven't heard. I really don't know, to be honest with you. I I just know that they're gonna set aside a certain amount of square footage for um. I I think it's both single and single family. I I'm not a hundred percent for sure on that. I just know.
So they're talking about using the existing facility?
And the other building over there, yeah. It's supposed to be seventy units total.
Wow.
Whoa, that's a big traffic thing.
Right, yeah. Potentially. I I don't think they all sell at once. I think that's a progression over the course of time, but. Um, but it puts, I think, a very key demographic of housing into a market that I think we really need.
They're not asking for property.
By knowledge, no, not yet.
Not yet.
I've been told they haven't asked for it in in previous projects they've done, so I guess the only other thing you can say that's maybe negative to that is. You know, do they use local subs, local? Um. Materials, that sort of thing, and I don't know on that either.
You can already say that about a lot of stuff that goes on in town, though.
Yeah.
True.
There's very few homegrown contractors anymore, especially residential.
Yeah. And that's because the.
Aged out, most of the good ones.
Well, that and it's such a difficult market to work in right now.
Well, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions if we legis.
Yeah, um, and most of them are just dollars and cents where all those pieces fit. That's what they'll be discussing today.
Yeah, it looks like they're going to. Continue to do that even after twenty twenty five. I haven't read it closely.
This isn't the same bill.
I know, but this.
Yeah.
This is this one, yeah.
I guess.
Twenty five and on.
Switching, switching back.
Yeah.
I I did confirm this, so. There's a good reason. Sometimes it's sometimes there's a blessing when I get confused about something. This does go to committee on Wednesday. They just scheduled a hearing on this, so it's good that we kind of, you know, we talk about this now because we won't have another meeting. Before this goes to hearing, and I think with the new ninety day shot clock that they're all, you know, trying to adhere to, stuff is lying.
Yeah.
Like they're, we're finding out about stuff immediately. But like there's, there's just not a lot of lead time, so. I I think the one thing that we could add for the two for twenty twenty one twenty. Right? Is it's entirely within the commission's discretion, and if it were to lend, and we don't even have to do a formal letter. It could just be by motion, right? That subject to the understanding that as of yet, there hasn't been a request. For any kind of payment from the property, you know what I mean? In other words, it's actually trying to, you know, bring affordable housing, and granted, we don't have any control over that. But I mean, if you if the commission did wish to lend its support, it could do so contingent upon the understanding that they're not asking.
What is that the old saying? Send it, sell it to them or just sell it?
Sell. I think it's.
Just sell. Say, I mean, if it's.
Yeah. They can't. They can't. At this point, they can't say, oh, it's gonna be sold to this person.
Yeah.
Right? That's beyond their purview, but we could make it known upfront. That, and this is not me trying to say what the commission's policy should be. I'm just trying to give you options since you identified that it. Would be, you know, potentially property tax sensitive. You could make that stand.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, it's going back on the property tax.
Now, once it's fixed up, it's more than that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So would they um? I I would think that. Uh, we could do two things, right? One is your scribe, right? I could sit over here. Um, during the meeting, cause there's about an hour and a half now where I'm not gonna have to do anything. Right? And I could write up a little letter of support that you could add as an agenda item to the end for you to consider. Um, if you wanted to make it formal, or you could just by a motion. Um, say, you know, we s- we support this, you know, sale to get it back on the tax rules. Or you could do nothing. All of those things are, you know, and and allow the allow the legislative process to play out. Right? It's not like you, nobody's holding a gun to our head saying we have. Right? I'm just doing what I was asked to do, which was to bring it for your consideration.
I'm generally in favor of it, just. You know, some means of just putting it back on the property tax rule, which I gotta think whether it ends up being a commercial or residential type of project, that's what's gonna happen. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, but it should help solve the or the housing crisis we have.
I hope. Like I said, you know, we get kind of ding because we're not for all the abatements, or we're not for some of the. Maybe the middle part of that equation or something we've been told, but that doesn't mean that we're not for it in general, and I think that's a general purpose to point out where we. Really do stand on that, and when we have an opportunity, we should. Be generally supportive of it. That would be my thought.
Well, so we want him to go ahead and write something and then was it at the end of the meeting or something?
Yeah. Is that what you?
Yeah, would you there?
Yeah, I can make a motion there.
Okay.
And we need to motion to.
On that.
Just sign this one.
I just have one question on this one.
Sure.
As of now, it's coming out of surplus out of the general fund. What happens when that surplus isn't there anymore?
Yeah.
I don't believe that you're the only commissioner, right, um, that may have that, right, as as. Because as it stands in statute, that doesn't automatically come back to us out of our coffers. They would have to amend that in order to accomplish that, which then I wouldn't support. Well, I think that's a heck of a point, and and again, is your scribe. Right? One of the things that we could add to this letter is to, and then we could have a. You know, if we could consider it at the end of the meeting, just like the other one, right? But basically. Uh, we can make it contingent upon the understanding that this is gonna continue to be, right, that this should not be shifted. As has a habit in Topeka. Right of starts off and it's one thing.
Yeah.
And then it's like, oh, well, we get the camel's nose under the tent, and it's all. Too convenient for them to say, well, this is a property tax thing, and you know, we really should fund it. And then we just shift another public cause, right?
Yeah.
And and I'm not trying to say that it's not, as a veteran that actually has a disability rate, right, of ten percent because my ears ring. Right, um.
That could just be the speakers.
That that could be the speakers too, right? I'm not trying to say, I certainly wanted, would want, wish to discriminate against my own class. Right? But at the same time, I do think it's an important fiscal policy to make sure that we're not committing this. Right? At the expense of ourselves.
Well, yeah, it does say totally disabled permanently and totally disabled, but unemployable.
Yeah, that's.
And so that's based off of a federal B A formula too. It's not even the state or local formula, so. We have.
Yeah, it changes quite a bit on occasion, but still stays pretty consistent to that. To those two, and if I understood this right, this bill pretty much mirrors the ones across the way in Missouri. So, um.
That I don't know.
Well, when you're, I mean, just when you're talking about, you know, benefits of one side of the border, the other side of the border, I think this is one of the reasons why they're. Wanting to do this, and this is um. You'll notice there's a lot of representatives on there that kind of represent that swing right there. Kind of makes sense when you think about it, so. That's that's my only one concern that this is eventually that gets. Pushed down. I mean, you need to be clear that that's not our goal.
Well, and we can raise wholly heck about it because it would require them to amend.
Yes.
The statute, if that were to come, if that were to be the case, and then we can raise wholly hack if they start to consider that. You say that's not what it was sold and we were not able to stomach it. Right? When it was going to be entirely our cost, and now you're trying to pull a switch or.
Right. On another unfunded mandate. So, yeah, I would pass, I mean, add some kind of language in there that lays that out, but not a point with it.
How does the rest of the commission feel?
Yeah.
Well, I now have my task.
Okay.
And with that, I think we're about up to this one. Thank you, commissioners. There is, as since I have thirty seconds, and I would hate to yield any time. That would be very unattorney like. There is a bill that's forever long that uh is was just brought to my attention um about. The pooled money investment fund. And apparently there's some, there's some changes that are being proposed by the legislature. To how to what we can invest our public monies in. Um, I can tell you that without having dug through that legislation, um, generally, and. I, this is a finance thing, so I'm not gonna try to enrich. If you know anything about this bill, feel free to pipe up.
I haven't heard the bill. I just know for years we haven't used the pool. Early on, it's implemented, was back when I was there, so it's been a while. I did use that money to invest county funds, but it's, we've been able to get more rates attractive locally. Shiloh has. So I would talk to her about it. She would be the one in the know, but we haven't used it much.
That that would be, that was always kind of my consensus is my understanding as well is that we've historically been able to get better rates locally. And as this evolves, we can bring more information to you, but most of the time, those things seem to be rather boring when they come across. So as long as they're not telling us what we absolutely have to do, then, okay, there. With that, I have enough.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about it. I have a feeling it's gonna get a hearing sometime this week, I just don't feel that. I'm hopeful on Thursday, actually. I've seen it perfect, but it never works perfect, so.
If we're manic commissioners?
Yeah.
All right, good morning, commissioners, Manduweh Planning Director. I have um, the charter resolution to um, cease the school inspections um, before you this morning. Um, so if you remember, in December, we talked about um, the annual school inspections Riley County's been doing for many years. Um, the state last summerish, um, the state came out with a new rule or whatnot, that. We don't have to do them anymore, basically, um, so we had conversations. We had staff level conversations about them, um. You know, and determined that because there's a lot of different inspections that are already done. Basically, what we do is, is repetitive of what other people are doing. So by not doing these um, inspections, we're not taking anything away from, from what the school districts are receiving. They still have insurance firms come out, they still have the fire marshal, they still have building officials, they have lots of people who still perform. These inspections and then some, um, the, the. Um, food inspections are done by the state, so that wasn't anything that was covered under these inspections. Um, so that's not something we ever did, um, as part of this. Um, so again, what we found was that there was just a lot of repetition, and it wasn't doing, I've talked to a couple of folks from some of the different school districts. You know, is there any detriment to us not doing these, you know, are you having other inspections done by other folks? And again, really, we're, we're just kind of doubling and tripling up on what's already being done. In a lot of senses by folks who are, are trained and certified in a lot of these things, and we are not. Um, and we're not, we're excited to be, so that's one of the big kickers. Um, so again, after conversation, um, staff level conversations, and then bringing the conversation to you folks, um, it was determined that. Yes, we would go ahead and start the process to um, and performing the annual school inspections. Um, just one more comment about that, um, the state wasn't giving us any funding to do them, nor do we charge anybody for those inspections. So it was just costing us time and resources, which you all know, there's plenty of other things we can be devoting that to. Um, so that's where we are, so once you folks um, directed us to um. Proceed with the formal process to end school inspections, that's what we're starting with here. Um, so we have the charter resolution as required, um, and it. Would, it would need all three of you to unanimously approve it. It would then be published once per week for two consecutive weeks, and then pending no appeal. Um, it would be effective sixty days. So that's what we're getting here, um, are there any questions?
Yeah, um, and you discussed this on December nineteenth, which was the day I was gone.
Right.
And so this is the first I've heard of this, I, I don't know why. I haven't gotten enough copy of this to, to look, I was looking through it and couldn't figure out what was going on.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, and I know it was kind of right around those holidays when folks were in and out, but. Um, so again, what it is, is about last summer, the state came out with a new rule saying. Previously, we were required to do school inspections, annual school inspections as per the state. For many, many years, and we've been doing those, um, environmental health and planning and development have been doing those for, for quite some time. Um, again, then the state came out with this new rule, it took us some time to figure out, okay, what does this mean? The statute wasn't entirely clear. So we did, you know, did a lot of research, did a lot of discussions, making sure we were interpreting it correctly, talking to a lot of different other health departments across the state. Who have already taken advantage of this and edited their, ended their annual inspections through this process. So it did take us some time to, you know, kind of wade through it, make sure, you know, what it was saying, what, what we were being told it was saying. Um, and then we were able to figure that out. Um, and then, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, I talked to a couple of different, um. Uh, folks from the different school districts, because we're doing all the schools in Riley County, that's including inside city of Manhattan city limits. And all of them, all the elementary, middles, and high schools, all over the county.
How many did, how many did you have?
Let me do a quick here.
Captain, I would just mention in a conversation, so this is actually a requirement of a local health officer. And at Riley County, the task has been given to the environmental office, which is why Amanda is presenting. And so, um, the state didn't actually remove the requirement, but they gave you the option to opt out. And so the requirement still exists if you don't opt out, and we would be, have some potential risk, we're supposed to do it, it fall. Um, we would need to address that right away, because there could be issues with our local health officer requirement to do it. Um, it is redundant, we don't have a team staff that are seeing anything that is. Um, going to make a difference for those schools, um, Amanda did talk to all of the schools and verify, you know, that all of these things, we don't, we don't have training in. Health and safety as far as that, I mean, her environmental team doesn't necessarily know about food, or, you know, kitchen requirements, or. Safety requirements, and so it was a pretty precursor, I walk through any. Um, and I all, I, I got involved because it was in, before getting started, and so I got the information from all of the other local health officers. Stating that, yes, this is something they are stopping in all their counties because it doesn't serve purpose, yeah. Not necessarily only because of the staff time or money, but for not actually making a difference in any school. Uh, which is where a bit more background on it.
Yeah, thank you for those clarifications.
Yeah, it took a lot, yeah, what, when you walked in, what did you, what, what did you inspect?
So there, there was a wide variety of different things, so they would go in the restrooms and make sure, and, and I'm just picking a few. Go in the restrooms, make sure there's hot water, um, make sure, I mean, there was a variety of things, making sure things were clean and in good repair, I mean, they were checking playground equipment. I mean, there was some minimal structural stuff they were checking, um. Gosh, a wide, a wide variety of different things.
Kitchen stuff.
No, nothing having to do with the kitchen, right, exactly, they weren't doing any, any food testing, any, you know, food. Yeah, things like elevator, there was some, yeah, some little basic pieces of kind of almost everything. Um.
You guys weren't trained to do anything.
Yeah, and I just.
Other people do. They have inspections by others covering all that stuff.
Who are, yeah, who are actually certified and trained and are actually able to. Do those things with the good bill, and so it's nineteen schools, we were.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, I just, I just counted what I had in my list.
So it's all the schools in, in Manhattan too.
Correct.
Well, Manhattan doesn't have to do that, it was just a county thing.
Manhattan does, they have their building official, they have their fire, fire marshal, so they have other people doing those, thinking of their insurance.
What we're doing, which is why it's redundant.
Yeah, yeah, and of course, they have, like, all of the schools have their insurance adjusters, and then, um. KDA does all of the food inspection, so again, we were just kind of. You know. Now here we are, check things that have already been checked, and we can't really, you know, can, you know. You can do visual inspections of things, but as we all know, sometimes that's not. Quite what needs to be done, so.
The main grid line is there's no requirement, anyone can do it, so while we were short-staffed doing environmental. Uh, previous health director was doing it, but again, like, neither one has any kind of, of training at all, and it doesn't, it just wasn't making any difference.
Right? Okay, well, that helps, that helps, thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, um, well, then I'll go ahead and move to approve charter resolution number eleven, exempting Riley County from KSA sixty five dash. Uh, two zero two subpoint C.
Okay, I would second that.
Then moving second to approve charter resolution number eleven, exempting Riley County from KSA. Six five dash two oh two C, all favor.
Right. Thanks very much, we'll go ahead and get this published.
Mother registration. Thank you. Yeah. Go ahead and go on.
Yeah, but Mark, you know, Scott.
Well, let's be pretty quick, this is the monthly update for, uh, I'll cover the jail and. I will cover the football function, some of the ongoing things. Uh, one of the good things we found out, uh, for twenty twenty four, we've got a national award for a hundred percent of our jail staff or medical officers, receive training. In a twenty-four seven operation, training's always a challenge, because it's really a testament to the employees that work midnights, have to come in on days off. It's, it's difficult, so it's, it's really a hats off to employees for making the effort to get that done. Um, over the weekend, uh, we adjusted, we do some key mails, uh, to a separate location. And we matched out again, transferring more, uh, this morning. So just an update, our female population is still exceeding, uh, facility capabilities. And I would like to thank, uh. Mister Parker and Brittany, your staff. Uh, we made a lot of progress, um, in mental health contract, the only reason I don't have one, and not only agenda present. That yet, it's because I'm a little behind, your staff are doing wonderful. Uh, so we much appreciate that. And that's really about it, I'll probably be seeing you a couple more times this month on some issues we talked about. A little more in depth, so you have better information regarding this issue.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to thank the county for, this is about a month old now, but it's the first time I've, uh, seen you guys since then, is after a, the snowstorm on January sixth, the. County did a great job of keeping our parking lot in such a way that we could get our police cars out and continue to do things for the community. Um, of course, none of us have ever seen a snow like that, and so it, it did things at our parking lot, just like it did, uh, in other places, but we. We needed to be able to get those cars out and in, and in service, so that the county did a great job of helping us there. A couple of events for the community, uh, upcoming, uh, February fifteenth is the polar plunge. It's gonna be ten o'clock in the morning, it'll be out at the, uh, Tuttle, uh, Creek Park Swim Beach out there. I have yet to look at the weather forecast, so I don't know if it's gonna be one of the warmer ones, or it's gonna be cold again, but, uh, February fifteenth is when that is. And then on February twenty fourth, the director will be holding two, uh, virtual town hall meetings that people can log on to through our website. He's gonna do one at noon, and, uh, one at six o'clock in the evening, and it's just gonna be for him to discuss his, um. Twenty twenty five crime reduction plan with the community, so, uh, invite the community to, to tune in for those, and, um. It was a, a nice weekend, uh, weather wise, it was a nice weekend, I think it's gonna get colder again, but as the weather gets nicer. Always like to remind people, it becomes very tempting to drive faster when the weather gets nicer. Uh, and our accidents have continued to be on the rise, our preventable accidents in Riley County, uh, for twenty twenty four were. Higher than we like to see, so we're gonna be doing some efforts to continue to try to reduce those by focusing on the things that most often cause accidents, like. Driving inattentively, um, following too close, and, uh, not yielding when coming on from a, another road or from a stop sign or from a stoplight, so. We want people to be safe, and we're gonna be out there, uh, trying to make that happen. That's all we have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good morning, Greg Istone, Riley County Extension Border Culture Agent, uh, found out yesterday that, uh, there's only six more weeks of winter. So with that prediction, um, we got several gardening programs coming up, uh, for people to be aware of. Now, this Wednesday was our K-State Garden Hour, those are monthly webinars. Um, just go online, do the K-State Garden Hour, you can register for that or watch the, uh, presentation. Usually within twenty-four hours after it. Reason I bring this one up on February fifth, it's from noon to one, is that, uh. One of your local agents is gonna be giving the program. Uh, so that's me. We share those responsibilities throughout the year, and so, but this is my turn. Water quality, water quantity, that's a big thing for Kansas and for K-State Research and Extension. And my topic, uh, that I was given the opportunity to present on is gonna be on drip irrigation. So it's the most efficient way to, to water our plants, uh. We see a lot of in-ground systems running and watering. Plants and cars and streets, things like that, but, uh, so drip irrigation is our best way to, to handle our, our water situation, and so. You register or participate, uh, this Wednesday, K-State Garden Hour. Several things coming up here in February, and I just thought I'd hit them all today instead of coming back, so. Starting seeds, uh, so as we get ready for springtime, if you want to start your own plants. Which, because you can't find those particular varieties in the store, or you just want the activity. Uh, this Saturday, ten AM at Blueville Nursery, we'll be talking about how to start your seeds for the season. Kind of in relationship to that, uh, seed swap, this is our second annual seed swap, uh, be at the Flint Hills Discovery Center. So it was last year, we had lots of people show up, lots of seeds being flung around. And, uh, that's Sat- uh, Sunday, excuse me, Sunday, February sixteenth, from one to four PM. There at the Flint Hills Discovery Center, Third Street, Manhattan, Kansas, bring your seeds, if you don't have seeds, still come out, and. Master gardeners are gonna be doing seed tape. So after you gather your seed, uh, come down and see us, we'll be on the bottom floor, the seed swap's actually on the second floor this year. So we have enough space, and, uh, we will glue your seed to toilet paper, just don't flush your toilet paper. Because you want plant in the garden, and what this does is it spaces your plants out, so that you don't have to go back and do some meeting thinning out. Mostly for kids, but adults can do the seed tape, but seed swap is the main thing, Sunday, February sixteenth. Master gardeners will be at the Kansas, or excuse me, the Flint Hills Area Builders Association Home Show, they're at the Armory. Saturday and Sunday, look for more information on that. And last but not least, is my home landscape design class that I do in association with, uh, UFM, so try ufam.org. And look at instructor, click on Greg Istone, if you want my class, and, uh, register for that. If you missed any of that, just go to our website, riley.ksh.edu, and that's up there on the events page, you can get all that. Or you could call me, seven five four one zero five three three six, that is my cell phone.
I'm gonna get a lot of calls about toilet paper.
So the, no, the calls I usually get, and Manhattan doesn't do it as much as they used to, so you know, fling it into trees.
Know nothing about that.
How do you get? So it's usually not the people participating, but the recipient of that falls in and says, what do I do about the toilet paper in my trees? And just like when you. I think we've all done this, flushed it down the toilet, kind of dissolved, so if you get somebody. Decorating your tree, and you wanna resolve that situation, just hose it down, it's gonna help.
Just flush it, huh?
Flush it with your, your garden hose for the time being, and hopefully that'll remedy the situation.
But that's some seeds in there too.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary.
See you next.
All right.
What he only does is irrigation dance. That's a, that's a yearly thing, that's really great. It forced me into it, I.
Uh, always a good laugh, that's good. Good morning, Commissioners, Anna Burson of the Riley County Appraisers Office. I'm here today, uh, with the request to appoint an assistant county appraiser. Effective March fourteenth, uh, this year, we will have vacancy in the assistant county appraiser position. A role that has been, uh, consistently held since two thousand and six. Given the evolving needs of the appraisers office, and this is an opportune time to not only fill the. Given the evolving needs of the Appraisers Office, and this is an opportune time to not only fill the same vacancy, but also update the position's scope to reflect the modern challenges and requirements of our department. The updated role now allows for candidates to be appointed who specialize in one of two primary focuses within the Mass Appraisal Office, residential and or commercial. After thorough review and consideration, I am pleased to recommend Steve Shirley for this vital position. And Steve's been with our office since two thousand sixteen, and he's a commercial real estate analyst. Uh his role has expanded to include supervision of the Commercial Division. Um and he has a proven track record with leadership capabilities, commitment to excellence, um and he is exceptionally suited for this role. There are some key reasons for my recommendation, which I don't need to read them all to you. Um certainly, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. And but ultimately, he's presumed proven himself to be an exemplary employee, um strong asset to Riley County's Appraisers Office and Riley County as a whole. Um and I would recommend him for the role of Assistant County Appraiser.
You said the position description was revised. Did it change the pay grade at all? Just?
Well, no, that's not true. It did change the pay grade. It moved from um exempt to professional pay grade, but it did not change the dollar amount. Uh I mean, it does slightly change, but yeah, so I moved it to professional because it is a deputy position and it has pretty significant responsibilities. Uh and to be honest, we say it was revised, but we didn't actually have a county, a deputy county or assistant county appraiser job description. Oh, right. So um so Anna wrote it. We got, we did gather a lot of information from a lot of other counties. Obviously, Anna has experience in multiple counties. Um and then it really more closely follows the way that other deputies work within Riley County as well or assistants, because now she can really, it can prove in the person who's internal, whether it's from commercial, residential, or personal property, who can be pointed to this position. Uh previously, it was combined with only the residential supervisor position. Uh and that doesn't necessarily always make sense.
I think it's vital in any Appraisers, any Appraisers Office to have residential or commercial background or expertise, because that's where the biggest portion of your tax base is. And so it's pretty vital to have those, one of those.
And I think it it needs to be clear that if not, that the person, i- if you decide to to appoint Steve to that position, he would still keep his duties as the commercial supervisor and increase into that assistant responsibilities, and so we would not also be appointing a commercial supervisor.
Well, we we'll be filling that position position now at a different level then, because Sam's leaving, but we've got something open.
So if you approve this request to appoint Steve, we would write the residential supervisor trainer position, uh which is essentially some of Danny's primary responsibilities to oversee the residential depot.
I think Steve would agree.
Yep, I agree. Um oh, go ahead and then make a motion to approve the promotion of Steve Shirley to the role of Assistant County Appraiser effective March tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is it March tenth or the?
This is, it's the Monday before. Yeah, it's a Monday in the week.
That's when somebody's leaving and then somebody's.
The fourteenth is when somebody's leaving officially, but it's all within that one week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is seventeen from here.
Wow.
I can scratch it.
I originally put the seventeen as silly from past conversation, then I should verify with Anna, so.
So it's the tenth.
It is.
It is now.
We're asking for the please.
Well, I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve motion, Steve Shirley to the role of Assistant County Appraiser effective March tenth, two thousand twenty-five. All favor?
Okay, all three please, Jane.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Do we have to initial this, too?
No, no. Congratulations, Steve. Congratulations, Anna.
Thank you.
It's February, we have to remember twenty-fifth, twenty-five, right?
Yeah.
January is your is your race period.
Get out a free jail card.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um first of all, I want to thank you for rescheduling. I was supposed to be here last Monday, and somehow last Monday I got I triple booked.
Triple booked?
Yeah, I I got in that morning cycle. Whoa, what the heck happened? So anyway, I appreciate your flexibility, and I have cleared all the remaining uh meetings going forward, so we're good. Uh yeah, that's something that you don't like ha- hitting you first thing on a Monday morning, especially when you're haven't, I haven't had all my cups of tea yet, I'm not quite awake and well, um I thought I'd give you an update uh on uh what's going on as far as the waiting list. You all are always interested in what's going on there. Uh I mentioned to you last year how the the legislature had actually uh allocated funds towards the waiting list to uh uh keep the waiting list at under forty-eight hundred. Uh at that time, we were over five thousand uh in the state, and I'm happy to report that we're down to statewide as of January fifteenth, four thousand three hundred and twenty. Um that's down two hundred from three months ago. The average wait time is down to eight and a half years from a all-time high of ten years. Uh so that's progress, you know, if you take what progress you can get. Um uh K-Dads is actively uh continuing to work on a brand new waiver. It's called Community Sport Waiver. Uh that will provide an option for limited services uh with a cap of twenty thousand dollars per year that we hope will be able to serve some of the individuals on the waiting list that do not need the comprehensive services like what we're providing right now with day and residential. Uh there, you know, everyone's needs are different, uh and our our current waiver that we've had for many years, day and residential uh is great uh for those who need those kinds of extensive services, but I think that having those options available will help really bring down the waiting list significantly. Uh if we can get some uh services to those who who need them, they need them the most. Um uh however, it's not expected to be approved by CMS or operational until probably late two thousand twenty-six, so uh they're they're working on it. Uh you know, the wheels of government move slowly uh a lot of times. Uh and and of course, we have a change at the administration. Uh and uh they have a lot of feeling out yet to do to figure out what kind of direction uh the federal government go at, CMS is who will approve this uh ultimately. Uh and and as far as the waiting list in the Big Lakes area, the four counties that we serve, we we have a hundred twenty-four, which is down about twenty, because twenty people have received funding uh for for the way for the way the waiting list, so. Our annual giving campaign uh for our foundation ended the the end of December. We were very successful. We reached our goal of seventy thousand dollars, which we were really pleased with. In addition, those funds were matched one hundred percent by the Goldstein Foundation, and all the proceeds are going towards our Race the Ruth campaign. That's been going on for a couple of years. Race the Ruth is currently at eighty percent. Yay, we're we're getting closer and closer to getting that sucker done, so very happy about that. Um and of course, once we get those funds raised, then we'll work on the next three phases of the remodeling project and and buy new heating and air conditioning units that are huge and cost a lot of money. Uh we have three of them uh on our building. Um I'm hoping we can get a group discount of some sort. We'll see. Uh I also don't know if any of the the parts that make those things come from Mexico or Canada, so it'll be really interesting to see how all that works out as well. Uh we underwent our annual licensure review uh from K-Dads. It was held three weeks ago. There were no findings, and so our license was renewed with uh no restrictions at all. This week, we are starting our financial audit, our independent audit that we do every year, so um beginning of the year is always a very busy time uh for us. Also, uh effective January first, we have a brand new managed care organization, MCO, uh state level, Aetna is out and Healthy Blue is in. So I signed the contract with Healthy Blue. The very end of December, we finally got the contract. Uh we're still working through all the details of getting our credentialing done, so we can start billing for services, so we might have some delays for billing there uh because of that, but that happens anytime we have a change uh at the MCO level, so I don't have any concerns about it right now. Uh the two thousand twenty-five legislative session, um most of our activity as far as uh lobbying is going on. Of course, we would love to see a rate increase. We haven't had one in three years, uh but actually, most of our time has been spent on uh lobbying legislature to help us slow down K-Dads uh on three major initiatives that they're trying to push through in two thousand twenty-five. Um these are big deals, uh and they're gonna be costly, and they're also going to change services significantly for uh for our clients. Um it's not that all these ideas are bad, uh but we we feel that, one, they need to slow down and take a much more measured approach. They also need to involve providers and families in the decision-making on what they want to do and how they want to change it. Uh the good news is, I think that um some of our accuracy by getting the legislature involved uh with it has actually slowed some things down. Uh one of the major changes that they wanted to make was a new assessment tool for determining eligibility for funding. Uh we all agree that the assessment tool that's i- is in place is way outdated and it needs to change. Uh the problem that we have with it is they also want to change the funding structure. Uh so instead of having five tiers, you have three tiers, and under that kind of scenario, when there's no new money involved, there's gonna be winners and losers. Uh and yet you're still obligated to serve the same people with the same level of service that they are used to or need. Uh there's gotta be a better way for that. Uh they want to completely unbundle our day services, and instead of having day services where we have flexibility for providing services, however it is needed, now they want to split it into seven different codes that we have to to uh bill for. Uh not very efficient. Uh and uh because for a pushback there, they wanted to implement that starting May first, but now they have pushed it back to two thousand twenty-six, so I'm hopeful that we can actually get some input on how this will change. Uh also, they want to uh input implement a requirement that providers like Big Lakes that provides day and residential services cannot also provide case management services, and we also cannot be the CDDO anymore. Uh again, it's a extremely inefficient way of uh providing service, and there's no additional money that goes with that. Um we've been providing case management services since nineteen ninety-one, and we've been the CDDO since nineteen ninety-five. Uh and the issues that they have with it is what the federal government has put down regarding guidance and what they interpret is uh an issue of conflict of interest, yet during all the you know, in the thirty years I've been at Big Lakes, we've never gotten any complaints uh about conflict of interest. So there needs to be a more measured approach to to this as well. I think that there can be a compromise. I think firewalls can be be put in place. Conflict of interest is is an issue no matter where what you do. It's how you address it. You know, uh and complete separation, I think it will be way too costly to the s- the system. You're looking at shifting dollars to administration rather than uh to service provision, and I definitely don't want to see that happen, so we're continuing to push back on that. I've spoken with all our legislators about it. They totally get it and understand it. Um the the other issue uh with these three major system uh changes is they're going off of interpretations that they got from the Biden administration. Well, we don't have the Biden administration anymore, so I I would think it would be smart to wait and see uh how things are interpreted with this new administration, because they're gonna have to get all that approved by them. So why not get some guidance from them on what they think uh can can be improved, so. Uh basically, that's about it. That's that's enough. But uh I'm uh happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'll keep you informed as more of this stuff goes on. One thing I will mention about uh separating case management CDDO, in case you didn't know. Uh the counties are the ones that are the ones that determine who the CDDOs are. And Riley County area Potawatomi Clay County Commission from those particular commissions back in nineteen ninety-five, uh designated Big Lakes as CDDO, and we've been at it ever since, so. Um we'll we'll see how that plays out, and I just want you to be aware of that, because if there's gonna be changes, that's gonna be changes that's gonna be affected through you all. So you need to be aware.
Imagine that.
I know, it's amazing. So but we'll work it out. Well, you know, I I I continue to be optimistic that we can get get on the table and be able to come through with realistic expectations for these things, especially if there's, you know, there's not a great deal of money to uh laying around to do this kind of stuff. I definitely don't want to see it being taken away from services. Okay, anything else? Okay.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you all.
Next, Commissioner Russell Stuckey at town.
In that exempting the state of Kansas from daylight savings.
Oh, yeah, it's Kenny S. This is though.
These are, these are important issues.
Are we the only state?
No, um one of them just, I wanna say Michigan, but I think I'm wrong. One of them just actually passed a bill ending it, and I I can't remember which.
Oh, really?
That's good. I like that.
Passed on both sides?
Yeah, I don't know if the governor's gonna sign it yet. I assume so, but yeah.
It's crazy to go back and forth all the time, or something needs to.
I always say that because straight forwards, I mean, maybe small backwards, I'd be like, oh, we need to keep this.
Yeah, I just.
Use the fact that I'm getting up in the morning, it's still dark outside at seven o'clock. Ready for Russell Kushner?
What is it, Russell Stuckey? Can't be fired or emergency management. Um some stuff that uh I think we're pretty much done on recovering from the cyber incident that hit the radio system. Everything's pretty much back back online like it's supposed to be and all the security enhancements are replaced, so knock on wood, so far so good, so. Um had our most of our two speakers for the intergovernmental election, I thought those uh were received well and and provided a lot of good information. Um as part of that, on the Um, as part of that, on the, the other agenda item I have for you is to ask for a, uh, letter of support from the commission, the commission's willing, uh, for the C W, Community Welfare Defense Grant. The commission's willing to work with Brian and did a, a letter drafted up where you sign if you're, uh, good with that. I assume you don't have any issues with that. Okay, we'll work on that. Um. Obviously, we had a lot of severe weather, um, sent out a lot of information about the winter storms and coordinated with the city and, and different things, uh, we did get, uh, at our emergency services director meeting. Both Manhattan Fire and, and County Fire got a lot of praise from, um, David Adams and Director Brian Pete, both for helping the, the police cars and the ambulances in and out and through the snow. So in town Manhattan Fire did a lot of snow plowing, leading the ambulances around in town. And, and out in the county, we did a lot of, uh, of the same, uh, also coordinated with a lot of farmers and tractors to help pull things out through the snow at different times. Some police cars multiple times, but anyway, um, uh, they were very appreciative and, and very sincere and, and and their thanks and, and Doug Russell in particular did a lot of that coordination of no one which farmers closer to wherever what cop car or ambulance was stuck and, and getting through that. We also, uh, helped the city of Manhattan. We pulled out some of our plans that we have in place for disposal sites. You know, primarily they're meant for, you know, if we have a tornado and we got a bunch of houses ripped up and a place to haul debris to and, and temporary pile them. So Manhattan was starting to get, uh, their normal snow disposal sites were filling up. And so we worked with G I S and, and, uh, provided them some maps of other pre-designated disposal sites that they could haul snow to. I don't know if they actually ended up hauling any there, but they were wanting to be prepared and, and we helped them, uh, identify those locations if they, if they needed. We're working on, uh, we've made a conditional offer of employment to fill our planning position. So, uh, I assume that will continue and, and we'll get that position, uh, filled by the next time I talk to you. We have been working on, we've had a couple of the outdoor warning sirens, um, in the northern end of the county that haven't been working quite right. We've been working with the vendors to get those fixed. It's not happening quite as fast as I would like, but when you work with out of town, when the vendors have come from out of town, you don't have any local to do it. You have to deal with what you have, but. We hosted our advisory board and also our annual firefighter appreciation banquet. And we had one of our bigger turnouts, if not the biggest turnout since I've been here. We did it up in Randolph this year and that was, well. Met with Barry working on the case he's prosecuting for a violation of the burn permit process. So for an illegal burn, and so that's been interesting.
Yeah.
It's the, Michelle's been real busy doing burn permits. It's the renewal time for the, for renewing your burn permit. So for anybody listening that hasn't renewed your burn permit, now's the time. They, uh, expired the end of the year and you need to renew them every year. So if anybody's listening and hasn't renewed their burn permit and plans on doing some burning, now's the time to do it. You can go online to the Riley County website and search burn permit and fill it out online. Or you can come into our office and, and fill, fill out a piece of papers. Uh, but you don't have to come into the office. You can do it all online and, and it'll, it'll get mailed to you. So. Uh, the University Park Fire Station one ten, concrete's poured, um, the building should arrive. The building package should arrive any day. Been working a lot with Brian. Brian's been working hard to make it as simple as possible to get the electricity to the building. Because of easements and non-easements and, and government owned property and non-owned properties. So Brian's been helping us.
Oh, my God.
It took two seconds. It took two seconds.
Doug's working on getting the new, uh, the new trucks that we purchased, uh, in service, getting the, uh, right radios in them, the right mounting brackets for the different tools and tools located in cabinets and, uh, I think one of those should go in service this week and the other should, should go in service, uh, shortly after. And then, uh, Deputy Chief Conradi and, and Michelle and, uh, are all working hard on getting our software conversion completed over to the new fire reporting software. And, and Doug and Jake both, um, through the snowstorm were out pushing in snow at, at, uh, fire stations in particular. And like I said, needed doing some stuff for ambulances and, uh, all during the storm. So they put in a lot of hours. And then we have the extinguisher there for you and then the run reports for the month of January. Do you have any questions for me?
Sorry, I didn't make it to the banquet. I had some friends at five W town, kind of surprised to say, uh, glad to see you.
There's next you have Jacob Hanson in the hearing of fence view application. Van Dol, yep.
Do we need, need to make an official motion on the letter of support?
Or by consensus, either one.
Okay.
Do you guys agree by consensus?
Yeah.
He kind of asked you midstream of the report, do you agree by consensus on that?
Yeah. It was just written there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's fine. I'll do, I'll do a mediocre draft of drafting it. And I say mediocre because I'm sure there'll be some legal reason I don't catch that makes it in. And then bring it to you guys for consideration. A good job is if you know, that burns that light is.
I agree. I, I also would like to.
Hey Catherine, can you hear me okay?
Straight directions.
This is Jacob Hanson.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just doing a quick test. Thank you, guys.
Catherine, can you hear me now? Yeah, I heard.
Very good. Thank you.
Have a good Monday, Russell.
You do.
The voice from above.
Hello, hey, at ten fifteen, will I just be called to the podium or do I have ten fifteen, I just block up there?
On these ones, I'm not for sure. I, there is a.
Jacob, are you?
I'm here. Hey, hey, uh, we'll, I'll do a little bit of a introduction here. I'm, I'm online, Vern. Um, but, uh, I'll do a little bit of an introduction and then I'll, I'll introduce you, let you come up here and speak, uh, uh, at the podium for and, uh, whatever time that you, uh, end up going with, so.
Thank you. I know there was a period of time to do that. I just didn't know when inside the hearing, so, okay.
Don't mean to interrupt, but I can see that Brian's speaking, but I am hearing nothing as I was earlier.
That's test, test, test.
Yep, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Makes sense. Uh, commissioners, so procedurally we've had, we've had one issue, right? That we're making sure we do the right way, right? In that the property owner of the Vandal property that you're, um, about to consider as, uh, one of the two properties involved. It is actually Mrs. Vandal, right? She is unable to, she wasn't able to make it today. And so in her stead, um, I believe her husband Vernon is going to offer testimony. And because we certainly don't want to shut down the, you know, hearing, um, uh, because, uh, Mrs., uh, Shirley wasn't able to make it. We're just going to have Shirley provide, um, after the fact, a little two sentence verification that Burns authorized to speak um, on her behalf, because technically he's not the owner. And so she's the applicant and we need to make sure that that's all properly documented, that he does have the authority to speak on her behalf. Um, sorry to be a stinker, but, um, want to let everybody know. So with that, uh, Jake, do you want to take over?
Absolutely. Thank you, Brian, for that, uh, uh, information there. Uh, commissioners, we have, of course, today a fence view hearing, uh, something that is not terribly unfamiliar, unfamiliar with you all. Uh, back on October fourth, twenty twenty four, you'll know that we went out to this property and did our fence view. Uh, that was quite some time ago, so, uh, and per normal course of our procedure and, and doing these fence views, we have this hearing to allow um, each of the property owners to kind of provide some additional testimony of what they would like seeing regarding this, uh, partition fence. This particular, uh, partition fence is about a half mile in length. Um, and as, uh, you guys are very well aware, the purpose of this hearing and the board's decision is to determine uh, what the maintenance responsibilities are of the, uh, adjoining landowners. And that, of course, was the Shirley Vandall and, uh, John Chaffee. Uh, we have both here today to present their arguments. Uh, you'll notice in my, uh, agenda report, there is a very, uh, specific question that essentially you guys, when you make your decision, you should be answering. Uh, and that question is how should maintenance responsibility for the petition fence currently placed be divided for the future between the Vandall and Chaffee properties? Um, I won't go through each of the individual statutes that are attached, but they are attached and so are some case laws, uh, just for your guys' reference materials. Uh, as you guys consider the arguments here. Uh, furthermore, as far as what, uh, the presentation's going to look like, we'll have fifteen minutes allowed for, uh, in this case, Mr. Vandall is an agent of Shirley Vandall. Um, he can reserve that, any of that amount of time for rebuttal after Mr. Chaffee's fifteen minutes. Uh, the board can ask any questions they would like during any point, uh, during that argument. Um, and then, uh, it will conclude and you guys can make your motion as suggested there, uh, in the, uh, commission agenda report. Uh, so, uh, if, if the board has any questions, uh, please let me know. Otherwise, I think we're ready for, uh, Mr. Vandall to provide his argument.
I guess, yes, would you, uh, we'll need the chair to.
Just the chair opens it.
Open the public.
Okay, well, okay. I'm going to open the public hearing on the, uh, fence view.
It's open.
Good morning. Long time no see. Uh, yeah, that, I just heard about this last little deal just this morning. But anyway, uh, the reason that I brought up this fence view way back in July is because Mr. Chaffee. Uh, the reason that I brought up this fence view way back in July is because Mr. Chaffee refused to uh, take any responsibility for his half of the fence. So he says it's he's got beans and corn on his side of the fence and I renter has cattle on my side of the fence. I tried to explain to him that his that fences to keep my renters cows out of his beans and corn, not his corn and beans out of my uh, pasture. So, uh, anyway, there was a terrible just a dead end. So anyways, uh, yeah, uh, we, all I'm requesting is you make a decision on how the fence should be decided to be maintained or rebuilt or whatever. So that's, uh, I rebuilt my part last winter, and so I guess that's all I have to say for now.
Good morning. Um, yes, I'm John Chaffee and I own the property on the east side of the from the Vandahl property. And uh, I do have beans and corns on my side. I have rented this farm since, I think, two thousand and four. I've owned it since two thousand and ten. Uh, this is the, this last summer was the first time that cattle had pushed their way through that fence after some extra food. That happens. And I would say, does the fence need repair? Yes, absolutely. It needs repair. And uh, does it need replacing? That's debatable. Now, Vernon says that I refuse to not do anything about it, and that's really not quite right. I know that Vernon came over one time when I was recovering from a knee surgery. I must have been on hydrocodone or something, but I just barely even remember the discussion, if there was one hardly. So I just wanna I do, on that October the fourth, in the afternoon, Vernon Vandahl sent me an email that I found kind of offensive, and I have copies for you if you'd want to see them. Uh, but he stated laying down conditions and demands about who could be on that property and when to make any repairs or replacements. And uh, this was long before you, the commissioners, had made any kind of a ruling on this. So it's been kind of troubling to me. I'll leave these copies with you and but I'm willing to abide by whatever uh, decision you make. Thank you.
One question, if, if I may, commissioners, that I would have of both individuals um, is that I would, I would like to hear what recommendations, if any, do either of the parties uh, how they want maintenance to be divided on the fence. That's the main issue, a question here. Uh, that is what I think the board wants to consider is how do you guys want the maintenance responsibilities divided? Uh, Mr. Chaffee, feel free to go first and, and uh, Mr. Vandahl will go thereafter. Thank you.
Uh, so I'm hearing that old correct, I think you could barely hear that, but how's the fence divided? Yes, I have the north half. That's kind of the normal thing and who takes care of what fence?
How would you like for it to be divided, sir, with, with, between fence maintenance responsibilities?
I'm okay with maintaining the fence. I have, do have about a thousand acres of pasture with a lot of different people. We run into this same situation all the time, but we've never really had an issue or problem with it. Uh, oftentimes, in my experience, the people with cattle on the side that have cattle on their side, I have crops on mine. Normally, they do take care of it. But I've got the reverse situation where I've got cattle and they've got crop land. I've taken care of it. So in this situation, I'm willing to take care of that half of the fence. I'm good with that. And uh, whatever needs to be done to rectify the situation.
So if I understand correctly, Mr. Chaffee, you're stating that you would like to take uh, the responsibility for the northern half of the partition fence. Is that correct?
That's correct. That would be a kind of a normal
Okay.
Application, yes.
Thank you. And then Mr. Chat, uh, Mr. Vandahl, excuse me, would you mind uh, clarifying your, your stance on on uh, maintenance responsibility and what you would like to see?
Well, I, I had three choices.
One that kind of gets blown out or having to come back again after this meeting, but they're having someone to do enough exactly what's going on.
I'm hearing a little clearly, more clearly now. Thank you. Well, if there's no other arguments or questions in front of the board, does the board have any other questions, concerns? Has the board decided on how they want to divide maintenance responsibility?
I believe that apparently we can close the hearing first.
Correct.
No, but it says, this thing says you can still ask questions.
Yes, I just thought someone asked her, then you.
You have questions for them?
You can, you can, you can close the public hearing and then, um, because they've been heard and then you can continue to ask questions afterwards. You'll be fine if you do that. Okay, you're fine.
Both were close, but post-public hearing on the Vandahl and Chaffee fence view. Thoughts?
It sounds like we need a property. Which is what we prefer to see, to be honest with you. This is the first, one of these that we've had, where both property owners were actually in attendance, so forgive us for that.
The Chaffee is gonna take steroids to the south side and.
No, north.
North side.
We need to.
You'll, you'll make a, you'll, you'll make a motion, and I think the other thing to that that you would, that you might stipulate is, and it was brought up by um, Mr. Vandahl, um, that if, right, you might talk about which side of uh, that, that it could be built on either side, right, of, of the fence, right? It could be built on either side of the hedge row, and it would be, and now I'm, this is not something that would traditionally go into your order. Right? But it would be the province of Mr. Chaffee if he elects to build it on the side of the hedge row that's on the Vandahl property, right? He would need to coordinate access uh, with uh, the Vandahl property. And that's just state law. That's not something that you need to get into the middle of, right? We don't, we don't deal with those types of, those types of disputes. That's an access thing between him, between neighbors and that, that's, you know, if they're really a problem and that gets into like, I go to the court, and hopefully the property owners can avoid doing um, and just resolve it. All we care about here is, is determining who is responsible for which half of the fence, which I believe the property owners are in agreement upon. Right? And your order could include, if you're gonna, you know, you can build it on either side of the hedge row, and if you're gonna build it on the on the side that's on the Vandahl side, then you need to coordinate with the property owners, and that would be my suggestion. Jacob, did you have anything separate from that?
Uh, no, Brian, I think you surmised it pretty well. So thank you.
I'm not doing bad in shipping. He's our expert. Jacob's our expert on fence views. Yes, if.
I don't guess all problems.
That's for me, I mean, for me, it's.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure because that's been stated.
Yeah, there's an awful lot that is not our problem when it comes to these fence views, and there's a reason for it, right? People, the, the reason is that not to editorialize too much, but this goes back to the wild west, right? And we are not, last time I checked, the sugar, right? We're just an independent board that comes in.
They're only telling you that it doesn't happen.
That's true. That's true. That's right. No, he can, he can go out. So no, basically, our job is to just say, okay, guys, right? One maintains this side, one maintains the other side, and if you've got access concerns, that's governed by state law, and hopefully you all can get along. They have to coordinate, and so that's all I have to know in the order, right? And I, we can't get into the who can get on there and who can't. That's, that's beyond the province of state statute, and it's really outside of our control, right? We can't, we can't. Nope.
Because I'm just wondering if a fence on both sides of the tree line.
There, no, I think it's on the one side. It's on, it's on the one, it's on the, it's on the Vandahl side, the current fence, right? And I'm going off memory here, but actually, it's pretty emblazoned in my memory, right? It's growing into the trees, right? There were a couple of, uh, there were a couple of, as we were walking it right on that day, there were a couple of places where it looked like paths could have gotten under, right? And so basically, what's come, what's going on now is that Mr. Chaffee, which, and this is consistent with state law, is agreeing to maintain the north, is an agreement that he would maintain the north side. And so I believe where the dispute between the two property owners is, is, well, Mr. Vandahl may not appreciate the contractors that Mr. Chaffee would have to come on and build the fence, right? To, you know, add barbed wire to the fence where it kind of existing is, that's, that's between them. That's between them. All we do is attribute responsibility, and so I believe the property owners, and in your order, you can state it can be on either side of the hedge row, and that's consistent with canvas, right? And if they can't come to an agreement, then unfortunately, right, it would be more expensive, but Mr. Chaffee could um, build it all on his side, right? Now, the farm kid in me hopes they can come to an agreement because that fence is gonna work an awful lot better if it's built on the Vandahl side, because it's got all those trees to line up, line up against, right? That's all I know.
Trying to figure out word that. And then Ryan and Jake would massage the motion as appropriate.
Okay. That sounds good.
Have to sign that motion, or sign the hard decisions.
That, that is, Jacob, would you like to expand on that?
I, I didn't hear Commissioner McKinley's question, I'm sorry.
I think is this, you have to write something up, perhaps the sign or just the motion?
I, I will, I will uh, take direction from the commission to draft an order that will eventually be recorded in the register of deeds. Um, so at this time, I would just need direction from the board in order to complete that, and then I will uh, get that done. I'm not sure exactly if that requires the commission signature. I'm sure it does. I haven't looked uh, recently on that, but if it needs to be, I can, I'll, I'll make sure to bring it to you guys to get it done.
The order will be signed, right? So what, what we would do at this year, what we would do at this hearing is we would just simply need a motion that would direct us to go and, and, and prepare an order of forty, and I can try to, I'm gonna channel the fact that I am still a human being and not just an attorney, right? I'll come up with some, with some wording real quick. I think the motion is basically, right? Chaffee's responsible for the north, Vandahl for the south, right? Chaffee can build it on either side, but he's gotta go if, you know, he's gotta coordinate if he's gonna go on Vandahl's side. And they're both responsible for their own cost of construction and maintenance. That's the motion, right?
Three seconds.
Through the, as described.
There you go. That'll work.
Resolution for the fence view. Chaffee on the north half, Vandahl on the south half, with access required to work out.
And they each bear their own cost of construction and maintenance.
I just said, thank you, commissioners. I'll make sure to draft that here.
They, they still have to vote, Jacob. Thank you, Jacob. I hope you're.
Yeah, I mean, you both. No fences are not, no fences, huh? No ladders. No fences are not no fences. Ha. No, uh, ladders involved.
Okay. Next item is question fifteen with Mr. Hanson.
You got those other issues we've had.
The letters?
The letters in state, we can work on that now.
I'm working, I'm finalizing.
Okay.
On the next session, is Jake attending that? Name next session about fifteen?
No, I'll be taking care of that.
Just wanted to be sure we didn't need to coordinate that.
Yeah, we're good.
Good, thank you.
In terms of those, that situation, what happens to the speaker phone?
That. Oh, the old speaker.
Yeah.
Remember it was determined that this good voice, well, it's not.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, because we did that for a couple of times when this works, this was good. None of them were great, none of them were great. So, but yeah, we're equally as.
You almost had to scream into that one, but yeah.
We're equally as bad as the other one. Thank you.
Well, it sits from there and if we're talking over here, maybe we got a point.
Well, it's really not, the speaker phone system on it's really not made to be used in the capacity. It's just.
You're done. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
A bit of a break, commissioners.
This probably, yeah. Part of the way, fans of, you know, what's happening. Anyways, like, you name, or they have their phone something, but I apologize if you don't want to see it live. I feel it's. First Monday of the month. I'm gonna call these two here and give one of my, my own.
I've got a personal email, this email, got a Google account. It's like, okay. I need to go in and streamline that a bit. Get a text, I get a voicemail. Although it does come in handy when we do actually have a, another instance, they're kind of handy.
Everybody was seeing it on Facebook before the, where it was in the.
I don't know if it was, no melt that blew off or what, but my rain gauge said we had three inches of rain. That's what I thought. That's a fucking right. We got, we got a good amount of rain. I'd be, yeah, I'd, I'd say maybe closer to an inch, uh, I don't really. Yeah. Yeah, it didn't get, it kind of swept through here and it's, I think it'll stop for a while and then. Yeah.
I woke up, I, I, I doubt, you know, sometimes, you know, so, you know, like.
Yeah, I know. I'm just wondering how long it's gonna take, you know, when mountains, no, over the stadium. That might be, that might be May. Might be next football. Yeah.
Unfortunately, the AG doesn't agree on that.
I will go two square. Yeah, two more.
Call one morning.
That's right, that's right. I don't think I have a stage.
First challenge.
It can be good for it.
You know, you're good. Or trapdoor. I still have it in my.
What else do we use to view this? Question, people's questions, I've told you.
Now, they still didn't think to the. We came down, what they. I think technology is.
That's what I thought. Thanks. So, that was the mayor of the office of the judge.
How would we do it?
Yeah. Pretty much. Can't be out for the.
They literally have been, uh, three, I think they had, I'm not sure.
No, really.
The ladder.
Oh, yeah.
So, all the starting began with, there was all, so it was back, there were some sort of, maybe, once you're like this, maybe. But it's always between me.
Great one.
It's amazing, this. The downs were, and so that, humans are. Players are there.
Oh, yeah.
Something needed to be.
Yeah. Yeah, they're very, they're making, like, their companies that specialize in that, who was, you know, I'm only just coming through. But they're all day. And they, they cut, you know, again, with the coming change and things, yes, they. The fence was all the value, oh, yeah, wow, people make sure that the problem somehow it's less the last. And please, I don't think, I don't, it's the same. There's, 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 we need to, they have to, explain exactly. Those things, Jeff.
I agree, so we're going to fuse, you know, real G cells, you know, minutes, you know, like, so this is down to the bottom, turning to any, we just saw it. You, you, so these are standing there.
Wow.
These, these, if you look at us, you can speak as well.
Wow.
Even though it's, it's, it's daylight, so if some reason, we don't, that, all of us.
We try to, we try to. I know. And also, I'm trying to, they have a program, I mean, where, like, so we're certainly, we're improvising, we're doing, uh, there's, the first case, and it was, like, you're taking, you're, like, you're, and he was focused on, like, you're, like, you're. Like, he was focused on the table, he was learning about the thing, he was learning about written images and all these things. It is kind of like, yeah.
We've got, they're hands to those, four, five.
There's a, we find that it's about five, ten, you know, and, and saying it's happening, you just, you were. Just seeing, looking, it's getting back, and so then, you still have a thirty thousand. I know it's, 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 yeah, or typically, even the, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That we could, because.
And that nature is too.
Nature, but that's more than.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's. Which, um, that's, that's, that's. Now, you, even one, we're trying to, yeah, over, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
The efficiency line was the network.
I mean.
It's me.
She's not saying, no. He doesn't, there is one, right? He always. He, what about in our family? So, I was, and I was done, I was done.
Where do you?
No way, you gotta check, like, the water. Oh, we just. We don't know. How much you're going to. You know, it's, and, 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 you know, it's, it's. I mean, I would, it's probably, that's, that's, I was, I was very much. I just, I don't, I don't, all of my guys, it's kind of, I was. For some hours. I guess. Again, I think those. I mean, yeah. I always tell you, don't worry, you're in town. And they're built. And they're free. They're always. Oh, yeah. Yeah. But I'd be saying. Yeah. I just have the problem. I'm just. After. I want to be a. You know, for. Yeah. Now, I'm not like that. I'm.
They have a twelfth frame. Yeah. That's all. Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I just have a little. I can see it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like cheese. I'm sorry, babe. But that. Nothing that it's. Not the ones. Well, I don't know. Place to get his. No, it's a lot of ground. Three, four times. I don't think. I don't want to. I don't think it. It's all cheese. No, sorry. Like, I think. They're just gonna keep. It's out. It's out. Yeah. You know what they're using? Okay. You don't. Well, I don't find out. Just. Yeah, I think you should actually. I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm glad. I mean. Yes. And. I'm. I keep doing that. I'm. So. Well, I tried to do. You know, I think this. Every time you do it. You're asking questions. Always. Put those license to me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm always like. Those things, yeah, yeah.
I'm like, example. For all. We. There. Something doesn't. Very. I always. I have a lot of that. Yeah. So I'm. I used to. All this, like. What's all you imagine? I don't know. I answer when something. So. And you expect it is. Well, I'm facing to. Some parties are familiar. Like. I don't know. I didn't know. So they're trying to. With. I'm. I'm just. This person. This. You know, I'm. I think it works. Also, they're trying to. There's no. But I just. You're. Yeah. It is. I don't. I don't know. Anybody. Yeah. But I took. And I listen. Yeah. I mean, she has been so. Thank you. Maybe. Well, now. I um. When. Yeah. I can see mine on Thursday. But. Yeah, he dropped my party. Let's go. Let's do it. That's so. We do. Let's go. Yeah. So. We. Please, please. Please. We're going. I capitalized. That's. Because. One was. Especially because you say that. We did. One. Six. If you don't. I mean. Eight. And you're each one. We'll find. There you go. There you go. It's three. Oh, I'm. Uh. You need to. And you don't. Yeah, you also. What is that? I'm not. So now you saw it. You see the sound. It was not like. Because. I'll tell you. You know. They kind of play the song. We have to. Back to home. Because we're. Everyone in the city. They're talking. Kind of fun. You know. Yeah. But you know, it's. What do you think? For. Or is. And. What? All right. I think. Yeah. You know, I got. Just. Watching. Oh, yeah. Which. It's. Sorry. So. I was looking to. First. So. Yeah. But. I just. I was. You can always. The fact. Yeah. That's here. They're. We can. All right. So you can. Their kids are. Yeah. That's. And. Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. You don't. Oh, yes. I can do. I don't know. I can. Where is? You. Where are they? I don't know. Anyway. No. Uh. Yeah. I think. First of all. Well. It's. Not. It's not. It's a doctor. I did not. Yeah. Well, I think. See. Yeah. It's. Very easy. To. We see. That. It's kind of. Sometimes. It's funny. But. Yeah. I'll. Thank you. And. I want. Yeah. This is. About. Well. Oh.
Oh. Thank you. We knew. And I'm going to go grab. I have two to listen. Right. And then before there's. Um. For Charlotte. There's. That was. Okay. We're not right.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
We did. I mean. So, yeah. That's. I'm. I'm going to do. Then. I'm. I'm. Now. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm. Who's still taking us after? No.
I'm starting to put it together. That's the other thing. When I'm not. I'm not. Stay. That's the big.
So we want. I'm really sorry. My best.
Oh, that's. Good. Well, I'm not. I'm just saying. My best friend.
Yeah. 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 All. Yeah. But I have. I think. I have. I know. That's like.
Now, here. These.
Sure, that's moving.
These are the letters. Uh. Here's.
Well, that is. First.
I do. Only going to get. Everyone. When I. Yeah. I'm hoping I make it.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah. First. We haven't talked about it yet. The challenge. It's part of our legislative platform. They brought. Oh, yeah. How did I not catch that?
Wish you would pass on the same point.
I got it. I got a typo. I'll fix it.
Does she want to sign five?
You'll sign twice.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Boy, that's it. I'll do that on both of them. Right? Thank you. See, this one is that. I need eyes on things. From the.
Hans is to do that all the time. Keep.
Yeah.
I didn't know. Representative. I was.
Was the chair?
Yeah.
I know. And that.
I went to school with Steve.
Oh, you did?
Just on that.
Oh, that's cool. Isn't it interesting? No. I mean, that's what I love about Kansas being such a small state. It looks like. People that you grew up with and seeing.
Well, he moved out to Salina. He worked for. Were then representative in our hand for a long time. And then. He'll come out for that. And then. Ratched off on the road.
Got a solid place. For example, you build up the dollars from what it is. I mean, they should find you get us. Where do you got it? It's not like five dollars. Okay, this is gonna be a year where so far. There's certainly a lot of those social, social type of issues and there just seem much. But it's not. Yeah, so it's like some big election. But that. I feel that we. Yeah. Like. Actually. Yeah. With the governor and the. Yeah. Well. This one. We need to be on. When he was. Giving. You know. Yeah. They can do the. Chris. Thanks. Uh, he can do the. Night for me. Monday.
Issue so that we don't get confused. Would you mind if I grabbed these? Because we have the final ones coming down for signature. Okay. That's. Quiet. Yeah. That's what we said. Serious. Yeah. Well, thanks.
I did give a copy of the bill.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's. Love shredding. I do. I love shredding. Like, we have a shredding box.
So was this intention?
What? Oh, all of this? Yes, absolutely.
You're just like killing trees?
I ju- I do. I do. I've always loved shredding. There's something cathartic about it.
You guys have the shredder as part?
Yeah, I do.
We have two, right? And we also.
Because we just had a box.
Oh, you have.
Just a box that it's ready. That's all we have in our offices now as well. Well, we have one small one, but the majority of it is in the bottom.
So we have the, we have the box.
I just throw mine in there very forcefully, and that's how I get my care.
Really?
No.
We have, like, we have a box, but we were gonna, we were gonna send a shredder to. And nobody else needed it to surplus. And I'm like, why won't the shredder? We already own it.
Hang on.
Yeah. What if the box is full? It gets full.
Commissioners, the meeting is launched.
I will move that the board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
The moving second come out of the session all in favor.
Aye.
I'll also move that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reading executive session.
I would second that.
The movement second is record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reading executive session. All favor, aye.
Aye.
You want all this stuff back? Uh, sure. Uh, sure. Thank you. Yep.
I'm not, yeah. We switched up a little this morning.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to discuss this morning the potential for a temporary pause of federal funds. So, um, as hopefully you're aware, but if you're not, you're aware now. Last Monday, um, the White House issued an executive order, O M B memorandum, N twenty-five thirteen, putting a temporary pause of federal financial assistance, including all federal grants and loans. Um, then on Tuesday, Riley County Community Corrections had received notification this pause would affect the Riley County Services through their B J A grant, and that it would be effective January twenty-eighth at five P M. And then on the twenty-ninth, um, the White House issued O M B N twenty-five fourteen rescinding the temporary pause of federal financial assistance. So in between those two orders, there were several lawsuits that were filed against the action. Um, another, um, lawsuit was filed, a temporary restraining order, which I'll have copies for all of you. Got these topics this morning, and so we couldn't get them in the packet, but. Um, along with that, so Community Corrections was the only one that received the notice within Riley County that they would have an impact. Now, we understand that the federal funds affects several divisions within Riley County, but Community Corrections was the only one that actually received a notice that there would be a temporary pause. Um, we also listed out in here, uh, like the B J A grant provides a hundred percent of the funding for the full-time recovery court intensive supervision officer one position. Um, so they fully fund that position as well as some of the, um, activities within the B J A and like the recovery court. And then the Health Department also has several programs and staff positions which are either fully or partially funded by federal and state grants. And because the new administration, new administration has cited federal spending as a priority, we wanted to get the following information in front of you as quickly as possible. So here's a list and a breakout really of the state grants that we have, federal grants and temporary, like we have pending applications out there right now for other items. Um, mm-hmm. So everything that is highlighted is their item or grants that we have that fully fund or partially fund positions. Um, the biggest one, I want to point out these ones. So WIC is, uh, one hundred percent federally funded and all of those positions are covered under WIC. So this entire amount, that would be all of their staff and all of their, you know, additional things that they pay for. So mileage, um, interpreter hours, stuff like that. Um, then these just have some funding and then B J A, of course, like we said, um, this is a four-year grant, so this is a four-year amount, but that funds a full-time position within Community Corrections.
Can I just add though to WIC and B J A also fund the entire program? So it's not just the staff concern, but also obviously every service that's provided through WIC and the recovery court and, you know, the whole program.
Yes. And all hands on deck as well. So, um, this is one of our, um, it's our drug and danger children coordinator within the Health Department. So this is a fairly new grant that we have received. Um, well, probably within only the last year, but that also funds a position and the entire services that that program utilizes. And then, of course, like I said, these are our pending applications. So we have like our Keats application. Um, we have a couple of University Park, um, and this water meter grant as well that Evan has been working on, so.
Part ready, you mentioned that the advisors you reached out to.
Mm-hmm. I have, yeah. Um, so we have reached out to Whit O'Briens because we work with them with all of our grants really. So we've, we hired them initially when we got the CARES fund and the ARPA funds, and we still work with them, um, on a bi-weekly basis and get on phone calls whenever we need their help. Um, we, I initially reached out to them Tuesday morning when we first heard about the freeze. Um, and then we also reached out to the, it's called CALD, uh, but it's the Kansas Association of Local Health Departments, K D H E, and then, um, right now, everybody's main point is just to take a deep breath. We don't know what's gonna happen, but, um, we are still fully functioning. We, I mean, we're gonna keep going, business as usual until we are told otherwise. But one thing we really want to point out, all of these grants are reimbursement grants. So we don't get the funding until after we have already paid for everything. So we'll go through the whole month of January and then, you know, February hits and we ask for the reimbursement to get, you know, paid back for the salaries, the services that we provided in the month of January. So if this was to pause, we wouldn't have those reimbursements.
These are yearly totals.
Yes, yearly totals.
Monthly. And I don't know. Do all of these work evenly every month or some that are more, you know, quarterly?
Yeah, some are quarterly. Um, actually, a majority are quarterly. Um, so it'll be easier to say which ones are not. So early childhood block grant is monthly. Um, K D O C is monthly, B J A is monthly, and WIC is monthly. Everything else is reported on a quarterly basis.
So we have to cover basically for three months, but then we get reimbursed.
Correct.
With, recently have cash reserves.
Exactly, Commissioners, exactly.
And I think if you've read the executive orders, we went through the presidential executive orders as well, just to see, because the idea, the memo stated that the office of O M B was aligning with the presidential priorities. And when we read through those presidential priorities, all of these would match his safe America and making America healthy again. And so, I mean, I'm not saying that I know what'll happen, but we, we can make the argument to say these all literal flow right into your priorities.
Those weren't effective, that.
Well, they, they were good. Everything was gonna be reassessed, but.
I'd say depending on who interpreted this. Initially, it was, it wasn't, he, everybody said it was everything, but he had exceptions for, and I don't hear social security, Medicare.
Anything that was a direct payment. So those, so all of these programs were a payment to you, and then we go to the service. So anything that is a direct payment from the government to a person was discluded. But, but all of the, all of the agencies were asked to make an assessment of their programs and determine whether it fit the priorities of the administration and if they're being efficient. So I guess my only thought, and I don't know, Brian, I know Jacob, Jacob actually was working quite a bit on this and trying to keep up with it. Um, but if you read it, I think there's an easier argument to make that they do meet presidential priorities, depending on which direction.
Okay. Okay, then who interpreted it?
Absolutely, right. Absolutely.
Like all the federal things, or it depends on the person that interprets it, not necessarily the person writing it.
First one is a judge today at some point.
Yeah, and we won't get to do that directly, but we can do it to K D H E and we can do it, you know, to the contacts that Megan has through the K D O C at our level.
And all the government agencies were hit with this last week.
Yes.
My daughter was definitely she talked to me. They worked all week, even feeling like Mr. Simi, trying to figure out what to do with all their words.
Mm-hmm.
It's just chaos.
Yeah.
Yes, it would need attention.
Yes. So this presentation originally was much different. We were coming emergency situation. We met with Megan and Jesse because we knew there was one position that was directly impacted. And so as we're getting educated on this, my question to Megan, this department head was, you know, asking questions that I thought the board would ask, because if these things happen, this board may have to make a determination at some point in time. Is this valuable enough to our community and necessary enough that Riley County wants to continue funding it without any guarantee of funding? So those are decisions you need to be thinking about when and if we get to that point. Whoever clarifies what exactly it means for what position, if we're cutting it, then we'll come to the board and say, here's the position, here's the department, here's what they do. Uh, do you believe it's, uh, valuable enough to continue funding even though it may not align with the Fed? And so those are decisions you'll have to make. That was what our initial presentation was going to be, and then this got rescinded, put on hold, and so we changed it just to prepare you mentally to all the different programs that could be impacted.
No, I appreciate. We still try to figure out what's affected.
Yeah.
Because yeah, when I was pushing on Megan saying, I'm saying I'm doing this because everyone should be prepared when you get those questions, if we get there, I said, I'm, I'm not against it. I just want, you're gonna get some hard questions, many department heads may get hard questions on, is this position necessary? It's a, why, and so we should judge as well on a specific program and say, okay, be prepared to come before this board and say, yeah, we need to continue this even though there's no guarantee of federal funding.
And that's actually why the other, the other services are here, because they would be able to share with you how the recovery court affects multiple community services, right? And whether or not, just trying to give you the information. So it's a tough decision to make.
At this point, because it's all suspended, but it's just, you're just prepping this.
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna get a warning.
Yeah.
I.
And which I think, you know, I've, yeah, I guess I'm more optimistic than, I think it'll all be worked out, but for a while, it's gonna be a mess.
I think this goes through its typical judicial process too, and probably ends up.
Figure it out for months.
It's gonna be important for years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good to go through this for the department heads.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But individual person in those positions, the commissioners, we are not sympathetic to that, but there are going to be decisions that are gonna, may have to be made, I think, communicating with Whit O'Briens, who's also represents the state of Kansas and grants and K A C. You know, their message to take a deep breath, this is all gonna be put on hold for a while. We're watching it closely. You know, at some point in time, we may have to react like we're getting prepared to react. But this is all good information and as many updates the board wants on this, so we'll give you, we need to keep on top of it.
I did speak with several members of congressional staff last week, and it seems like to me that there's going to be a new narrative of sorts that will lay out some of this stuff. It's just not in place yet. So while this is on hold, it seems likely that you'll get that, you'll get the narrative before you get the, get the acts more than likely. I don't know what things may or may not be. I, I can't begin to guess on that. That'll get debated, discussed, but I think you're gonna see a different, different narrative. I just don't know what it is yet, but I think there'll be time instead of just dropping the hammer off.
Well, to that point, I think right now we have received any communications from K D H E. And Diana, a really valid point that we may get haphazard information or maybe it might be late coming. I mean, you can relate to that. And so I think, um, you may hear from us more about K D H E as we learn things too. So Diana will bring that from you, but, um, you know, we really only have notification from one portion of Community Corrections and no one else.
Well, these state grants are like Keats state grant. Is that, that's, is that gonna be covered or is that state grant? Does that money come from the Fed or come from the state that?
My understanding is the, those Keats funding, that is state money. They had extra money from their infrastructure bill that they had passed, and that is my understanding that those are state grant funds.
Well, but those, yes, those are actually two appropriations. So that's not a grant nor a loan. That was actually appropriated through the congressional process.
Okay.
So that doesn't, that doesn't count. Wouldn't count.
Like the water meter grant set, where does that come from?
I don't know, though. I'm, I'm assuming those are some.
This one's also, um, I can't remember. I think it's, um, I know it's the state, but I can't remember the exact agency that Evan has assigned. Yes.
The, uh, but the U S D A grant would be.
Correct. U S D A, yeah, that's federal.
That's all right.
State revolving fund. So that's through the state and that, that's a loan. State revolving fund, so that's through the state and that, that's a loan that Evan had applied for.
And I did get the indication from one set of staff that some of the federal loan, federal loan applications don't. Don't be too particularly optimistic on it. Just throwing that out.
And that's why we wanted to list the pending ones too, because it was, it was listed in the, um, the original memo that they were. Not gonna be really looking at.
Yeah.
Any pending applications.
So this, this court order, I'm, we're in a chance to look at it, does that go, that cover all these things that we've got?
Um, well, the, the court order is really just what has been filed against, um, the administration. And so, um, I highlighted a couple of sections in here. And it says, um, it's really just on the first page, in response, the court has entered a temporary restraining order per. Prohibiting certain actions by the defendants in the case which is effective immediately. All defendants, including their employees, contractors and grantees, must immediately comply with the court's order. For complete details in terms of the court's orders, please refer to pages eleven and twelve. And then, um, I highlighted that one and two on here, because it says. Federal agencies cannot pause, freeze, impede, block, cancel or terminate any awards or obligations on the basis of the OMB memo. Or on the basis of the president's recently issued executive orders. And this prohibition applies to all awards or obligations, not just those involving the plaintiff states in the above referenced case. And also applies to future assistance, not just current or existing awards or obligations. Those were the big pickaways for me, just looking at those, so. Um, because you can see there's a handful of states on here, um, but like it says, it does apply to. All states, not just the ones listed.
Those would be the ones just listed in the, explaining the lawsuit, correct?
Um, applies to all awards or obligations, not just those involving the plaintiff states. Yeah, um, involve the.
And Commissioners Jacob Anton here, coming in online. Just to give a little bit of context of where we're at, uh, as far as position, legal position. Um, you know, we have this temporary restraining order that's been put in place. Uh, obviously it's very temporary, the court's going to set a preliminary injunction hearing. Uh, their words were expeditiously, I believe. Uh, so you take that for what it is, maybe a month, maybe longer, maybe a week, uh, kind of hard to tell. Um, I thi- I imagine they'll move pretty quickly on this one, if I had to guess, uh, at least within a month. That preliminary injunction is going to be much more of a permanent thing. We're gonna find out at that point in time whether the court puts in place this injunction for the entirety of the litigation itself. Uh, because right now the court's just saying, hey, hold off until we hear this. Um, so that will be the, uh, you know, kind of safe blanket, if you will, um, until we get that. Happy to answer any other questions as far as, you know, legal position goes.
Times in District Court of Rhode Island, that also is that gonna relate to everything?
Yeah, it's the federal district of Rhode Island, so it's operating on a federal level. Um, which is why they can, they can order the United States, the, the White House administration, they can bind them, uh, and that restraining order.
Questions, Commissioners? I don't think it needs to be answered at the moment.
We are watching it very closely. So if we hear anything else, we'll definitely come back and just let us know if you want more information.
Appreciate the work.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody, thanks everyone for your help.
Thank you.
You know, it's gonna be a large number as we go how much. Yeah, I actually have. Two items that are basically one item, but that, it'll make sense. Uh, discussing, um, two Senate bills at this point in time and maybe what direction we'd wanna go on them, um. And I gotta pull. Okay, um, discussing, um, Senate Concurrent Resolution sixteen oh five, the. Constitutional Home Rule, I don't believe it's been. Set a hearing just yet.
I haven't seen it as I said for hearing yet.
Haven't either, I might guess, if they've done this as they've done in the past, they'll wait till the end to do that one, um. But I, I don't know how important that is at this point in time, um.
Yeah, non virtual.
Yeah, they usually do an informational hearing and just kind of see what the waters are on that. Um, it does seem this year like the legislature, um, both chambers seem a little bit more. Approachable on the thought of kind of returning local control back to local units of government. Um, my guess is that's because there's been a larger influx of. Members of local units of government that are now representing in Topeka, um, so I guess you would naturally think of that shift. Um, that's the only thing I could come up with, I don't know if leadership on both sides is taking that exact same approach or not, but. Um, it would say it might not be a bad idea to at least put some written testimony. Into the, into the loop on that one, as well as new Senate Bill one nineteen dealing with. Um, motor vehicle title registration, and that just came out at the end of last week. So my guess is that one will probably move, um, Senate leadership has. Given the thought that they would next any one of these bills that comes up, so I, I don't, I don't know how this is gonna go, um. Apparently there has been discussion amongst leadership and, um, silos. Um, yeah, so I, so maybe some sort of compromises given there, I, I'm not for sure, but. Um, once again, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to put some written testimony into place and just have it there in advance. That's just my thought on both of them.
And have you got some things for us to review?
I certainly did, Commissioner, and I also, um, to piggyback on what Commissioner Ford just shared. I have prepared yet a third letter in the course of our meeting that talks about Senate Bill one one nine. Right, and I can provide a very brief overview of the feedbacks that I've heard from Shiloh about the bill. And what it essentially does is it just raises the weights. Um, so these are the three, I don't know, starts with the chair. Those are the, those are the finalized copies, I got rid of the, your, once again, I regret the commission.
Thank you.
Thought it was generous.
Oh, yeah, these are the ones here.
Do we need to make a full on motion on that or?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Each one separately.
And you, you can see which bills we're talking about.
Okay, yeah.
It's just three copies of the same thing.
Actually, four copies.
Is it? What do they do for?
Yeah, okay, so we need to do this one first and then. Actually, no, wait a minute, there's like six copies.
It's two different.
Two different. Yes. So one would be for twenty one twenty and one would be for two thousand. There's two thousand five and there's twenty one twenty.
Oh, okay, I saw the two thousand and five on there and, okay, okay, action. So.
Do you want to do them all in one push? That's fine as well.
We can do that.
They're both letters of support.
They are.
One of them's a, one of them's written testimony in support.
Oh, okay, so we should probably do them by. Let's start with that one, because that's the one that probably, that's getting a hearing second. I will go ahead and make a motion that we, um, did all three of us, right?
Uh huh, yeah.
Okay, um, that, uh, we signed a letter of support and supported Kansas House Bill twenty one twenty.
I would second that.
And moved it second to, um, support, send a letter of support for Kansas House Bill twenty one twenty, all in favor?
And I'll make the second motion to, um, approve a letter of support of written testimony for Kansas House Bill two thousand and five.
What's that for?
And you seconded a letter of support for House Bill two, two zero zero five, all in favor?
Now. Yes, and, and while you're signing, right, um, briefly, the overview of Senate Bill, um, one one nine. Uh, as, and I'm relaying on what I've heard from Shiloh, as well as what I've been able to gather. Is, first of all, the, it, the increase in rates will still not fully fund. What are our operations, we'll still have about, I, I'm not gonna speak numbers, but I know that. What I recall from the email is that it's above hundred thousands, so that we, we have shortfall for. But it's a heck of a lot better than what we're dealing with now, right? Um, and so there's, so there's that aspect of it now. Historically, right, the, the things that I can share about where these fees are currently set is. The last time they looked at any kind of a fee increase and did it was in two thousand and six. Right, and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you, if you know off the top of your head, but I then went back historically. And the baseline fee, and that was just, they had some increase in two thousand and six for high volume operations, of which were one. But prior to that, I went all the way back to nineteen ninety three. And they have still had the same base fee structure for each certificate of title, license plate application. And trans- and application to transfer license plates since at least nineteen ninety three, we get seventy five cents. For doing a license plate application or a transfer in two dollars for a certificate of title, which is. Crazy, you know, it's just, so.
He's on the dollar.
I have.
Well, in this, don't exchange this, don't affect. The fees, it just is more about this. Well, I think. Overall, at one time, the overall fees want to change, but it's just a change.
That is a question that, that's a question that I, I don't have an answer to.
It was supposed to be a standardized fee across the board and the counties are supposed to keep them and, um, leadership said no.
Flat fee to make it less confusing, but us getting a larger.
Right. And so what I went ahead and did for the board's review, since all of these things are flying at us. They crafted a letter. For the board to consider.
I mean, one packet, that's, what's this, one one nine?
We haven't approved that one yet.
Discussing, that's what we're discussing. Well, it, it seems like to me that whatever we do here, it's gonna be somewhat of a compromised situation, it won't be perfect. And we'll just have to deal with internally whatever our losses are and adjust accordingly. I mean, something could be better than nothing at this point in time, particularly since we haven't seen any real change in the structure and. I don't know my math is, um, nineteen years. And again, and I'm not advocating, I, this is an awkward position, because the way that. The way that I would normally like to do this is to try to reach some consensus and then I'd get direction on what I'm supposed to put in the letter. But that's not how this legislature is working, so. Well, I would tell you, if the hearing was today, and I was in Topeka and I was giving testimony. Um, I'd be honest about the situation, saying that. We're gonna start cutting some of our core services to cover the losses, because our county ad valorem shouldn't be covering these state services. And it's widely underfunded, whether you wanna blame it on this or however you wanna look at it, but.
Oh, yeah.
And it's not just a couple thousand dollars, I mean, it's a significant amount of money, I mean. If I'm not mistaken, I think Shiloh had said that she's shutting down the driver's license services. Temporarily for the month of February, so that she can move staff onto working on some. Other more important things that they're busy on this time of the year, and, um, gives us an opportunity to see what that looks. And I have to make some decisions on that, the state's not gonna be willing to work with us, then I don't feel the need to work with them back, then. At least, at least there was some, you know.
That's what, and actually this came up at that meeting, the, of the meeting Saturday, also, they were talking about it. Some of the people were talking to the trucking, you know, the commercial ones, we're doing it now, because Marshall County with, there's. Yeah, six, only six or seven counties in the state do it. And somebody, they knew that represents like eight different trucking countries, you know. That has, that each have eight or ten, and they call it the state, can we just come in and do all these there, and they go, no, that's county. So we can't, this, it comes to you guys, can we just come in to speak and do all these at once? They said, no, no, you have to go to a county office to do it.
And they're gonna find pretty quick that there may not be any county offices that are gonna do it.
Well, maybe they should say something like that.
Well, I think that's something you would put in some written, written testimony, um, or verbal testimony, excuse me, but. Um, laying out the details of why, why we think that, but. Um, and I've been guessing that this will get a hearing in the next ten days, I'd love to assume. If not sooner.
Didn't it get through one house?
It did get, it did get through the house and then it got buried in the senate, because then the leadership didn't, didn't wanna see it pass. So I never even, I don't think it ever got out, it got into a committee, I didn't even know if they discussed it in a hearing in that committee. But it wasn't gonna get to the floor, so my guess is they probably didn't, but it was.
Yeah, I think they got, three, I don't remember which one, I've definitely been through one more time, but.
Yeah.
So in one one nine, are they suggesting some, the, the whole around?
The, basically all the one, and all that one one nine is, is that it takes the current state statute. Instead of it saying seventy five cents that we get remitted back, it says five seventy. And instead of it's, am I, I think I got it correct, so they put a five in front of it, so instead of getting seventy five cents, we're getting five dollars and seventy five cents. To, to handle a certificate of title, right, that's, that's what they did, right? It's not a, it's really not earth shattering legislation, they're just trying to up the fees.
It's a positive fiscal change. It's better than what we have.
Yeah. It's not fully. Uh, I don't have, I don't.
Well, I think the treasures have already fought those battles, and this is what they think's realistic, along with their lobbyists, you know, you kind of go to what you think's realistic on all legislation. It might get passed, it's better than what you got.
Yeah, step, right, about enough, but.
Then we just have to figure out what our losses are and how we wanna adjust, or if we wanna adjust. What it comes down to. Um, she wrote in the email that this is an estimate, maybe Brittany, you were part of this too, I don't know, but. Leaves us about a deficit of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately. If this was probably based on the projections of the business that we've done, I currently want to, I would assume, yeah.
Which is still two motor vehicle, will age full time.
Right.
Those are not commissioners.
We'll try.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, make a motion then to, um, approve, um, the written testimony in support of Kansas Senate Bill one nineteen.
I would, I would second that.
Moving second to approve a written testimony in support of Kansas Senate Bill one nineteen, all in favor?
You need three copies, son.
Yeah, I guess, Commissioner, thank you very much.
You notice he's keeping them one page or shorter.
You notice he's keeping them one page or shorter. Right to the point. And supports I've signed in one day.
Uh, yeah, that may be. I can remember two, three, I don't, I remember.
I've got one more thing.
Get ready, Brian.
No, no, and it's not. Um, and I don't know. That's what our logo policy is. Is that in the, did it in hand, one of the handbooks or where is?
There's its own logo using policy. I wish Vivian was here, but yes, we do have it. There, there she is.
Well, and I'm not wanting to go into it now. I think we need to have a review of it, since.
Oh, yeah.
There's been some problems.
That's absolutely.
You know, you said the one, the fire trucks, other people have asked me a bunch of other stuff, I think. We need to be what it is, when, how it's being enforced.
Okay, I'll get on the schedule.
That is on the many list of things, then, wouldn't speed it up because if you want, but that's why. The current advice to everyone is just follow the current policy, which there is one. You need one of each.
Uh, yes, two of each.
Twenty twenty five, is this for, just for to look at? I ended up with two extra. Okay. Too much paper.
I know. We have a hard copy of that.
Of which one?
Of the logo policy, I think I can pass it along. I can't give it to you personally, but I.
Go ahead and send it to him ahead of time, Vivian.
Roger that.
You missed all my good puns today.
I've been here most of the time.
Well, one of them was an executive session. I said eight puns. I guess that's a matter of opinion.
There's no such thing as a bad pump.
Okay, I don't have anything else, and. I've beaten a lot of dead horses with sticks today, so.
I would make a motion to adjourn the February third, twenty twenty five meeting of the Board of Relying County Commissioners.
I'll second.
And moving second to adjourn the, uh, February third, twenty twenty five meeting of Relying County Commissioners, all favor.